Call this meeting to order the Hudson Board of Education's special meeting, August 29, 2006. And we'll start out the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you could please stand.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, so I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Sir President, I'd move the approval of the agenda.
We have a motion by Mr. Holland. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. Havishaline. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion is approved. The next item, I'll just ask for a motion to suspend the Robert Rules of Order, and...
Mr. Chairman, I'm in a position to offer a motion, and I would move that we suspend Robert's Rules of Order-
Second.
...for the duration of the work session portion of this agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Minnick, and a second by Ms. Crimmens. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of this motion, just during the duration of the work session, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion is approved. We'll commence with our work session, and we'll start out with a report. Mr. Minnick, do you want to start us off with the elementary space for learning options?
I will try to keep this short and concise. Just by quick way of background, this is our second work session. We have, as a full board, looked at a number of options. The Facilities and Grounds Committee met Monday morning, and it was Tracy and Tom and myself. Essentially, the, a little bit unusual twist, there's really not a recommendation that came out of the Facilities and Grounds Committee on specific options or recommendations, but there was lengthy discussion, and there was consensus, as opposed to a motion, but a consensus that the full board this evening, after our work session, reduce the number of options that the full board is considering to two options, and then proceed to further study, further define those two options, and interface with the public based on what comes out of the work session of the board this evening. Mary, comments? Tracy, Tom? And again, I know there's a lot of work that's been done by a lot of people to get us to where we are today. I think we started with 10 options, down to basically, I think, six options now. One item that I would add, and I don't, I do see Steve Hermson, and I just, I want to make sure that I accurately portray, or summarize, the dialogue that happened at the Facilities and Grounds Committee Monday morning. We did have an option H in front of us. That was a local tax credit proposed by Mr. Hermson. I would like to, Mr. Hermson, are you okay, Steve, if I hand these out to the board?
Actually, I went and made a new, I updated it, it's corrected grammar, and it says all pretty much the same.
Are you okay if I hand this out, then? Okay, I just, okay.
But I'll give a more formal one.
Okay.
I mean, I'd like to submit one.
Okay. Essentially, and to Mr. Hermson's credit, he spent a lot of time, a lot of hours and due diligence on his proposal, or what we know as Option H. After lengthy discussion at the Facilities and Grounds Committee Monday morning, Mr. Hermson has withdrawn Option H for further consideration. Comments at all, Mary? And again, same thing with Tracy and Tom. It's a work session. I think that your Facilities and Grounds Committee has a good handle on the options that are remaining. We had some questions, and we're looking for some further information from SDS Architects. And Mr. Tuig is here this evening. So with that, I would pass it over to Mary if you have additional comments.
I think you took care of almost everything, Dick. Thank you very much. And Tom Tuig, again, is here from SDS to share information. He's been working very hard to assess the options that you're looking at and bring information to you. So he's going to share that information. Tim and I have been working with him and Nancy as well, and he will share that information, and then I'll have some additional information to share, a summary, and then some other things that were requested at the Facilities and Grounds Committee. So, Tom, do you want to get us started?
All right.
Tom, are you going to use the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to move, I think, just...
Tom, before we get started, since this is a work session, and, you know, our goal here is to, you know, seriously evaluate each of these options, and hopefully, you know, be able to narrow it down this evening, are you comfortable, if we have questions along the way, that we can jump in? And I want to encourage all the board members, you know, this evening, we, I encourage you to ask the questions to Tom or any of us as we go through the presentations.
Sure. That's fine. Do I need to turn this on? All right. Yeah, I think, as we're moving through these, if you've got questions, please jump in and ask them, and I'll try to provide me answers as we go along. What we have done is taken a look-
Just move that a little closer, I want to make sure you got it.
Sure. What we did was take a look at several options at several different sites. Option C, C-modified, D, and D-modified, which is really just a little bit different square footage for each one of those, but looked at how they applied to several different sites. One was at the Crosby Road site, as you see here, which is just down UU and Crosby Road near the soccer fields. Option C and C-modified down at Cooley Trail, formerly Highway FF and corner of Highway F down near the YMCA. Option D and D-modified up at Holton Elementary. And then we also looked at North Hudson Elementary with Option D and D-modified as well. So we're just going to run through those, and really, what we did was take a look at the program areas and develop cost estimates for each one of these schemes for your consideration here tonight. At the Crosby Road site, just to get your orientation, Highway UU is to the north. It's a 26 and 1/2 acre site that fronts on Crosby Road. Over on this side of the road is where the soccer field of dreams are. This site is outside of the city of Hudson city limits, so it would require some onsite utilities, septic system and well. But what we've done is just laid out the proposed elementary school, which is 83,000 square feet, similar to Prairie Elementary School, on the site, indicated some parking and parent drop-off here, a separate bus drop-off, which would have a separate entrance off of Crosby Road. As I said, it's got no city utilities out here. It's not adjacent to any city properties, so annexation at this point is not possible. It would require a proposed drainage field. We've just mapped out a proposed area for that. I think it's pretty sizable, and it's basically 73,000 square feet, almost the size of the school.
Tom, can I, can you, just for mainly the benefit of the public, this site here was some original land that the school district owned prior to acquiring approximately 90 acres-
Correct.
-later. So we're not, we're not really looking at that other parcel, we're looking at this, or we're-
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the 90 acres is to the west. The 26 acres here is, there's a little parcel here that's owned by someone else at the top of that hill, but this is the site that's to the east of that.
Okay, so if we choose to, you know, use that other 98, 90 acre site in the future for whatever purposes, that's still going to be available without, without, you know, if we were to choose this site, it wouldn't affect-
No.
-what we're going to do with that other site?
No, this is just impacting the 26 acre site here.
Thank you.
If I may ask, how far down, how far east is this site of the 90 acres?
It's the adjacent property. This is the common property line here.
So it's immediate to you?
Right.
Right, it makes kind of a T. So it's like this, and this little, this little 24 is like this.
Looking at the cost for this new elementary school, Option C, the square footage is about 60,000 square feet of net area. We've got a ratio for construction and circulation of 31%, which gets you a total gross area of just under 80,000 square feet. Like I said, this is similar in area to Prairie Elementary, less the early childhood education, which is Option C modified.
Tom, could you talk about that ratio for circulation, what that includes?
Sure. That's hallways, walls, structure, and it varies between 30 and 35% typically for projects. It kind of depends on what you've got listed in your program. The more you delineate your program, the more efficient the building will become, but this is kind of a standard number, somewhere between 30 and 35%. So we're using a building cost per square foot of $136, which gives you $10 million in building cost, construction. We've got site costs broken out. Aside from that, parking and drives at 80,000. Grading for this site, we've estimated at 150,000. It's fairly heavily wooded, and it's got a little bit of undulation in it, so we've estimated that cost at 150,000. Playground equipment, 150,000. There'll be some onsite stormwater management required, so we've estimated that cost at 40,000. New electrical service at 25,000, and the well would be a commercial well required for this kind of facility. We've estimated that at $100,000. And the onsite septic system is $950,000. So we've got a total construction cost of 12,300,000. At this point, we're including a contingency permits testing, plan reproduction at 1.2 million, the FFNE, all the furniture and equipment, at a million A&E fees, which brings you up to 15,226,000.
And A&E are architect and engineering fees.
Just a quick question, FF fees, so that's totally furnished? I mean, that's the school being, basically, you just move in?
Correct.
I mean, does that include IT and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, the wiring, we figure in with the electrical cost, I mean, as far as the data and-
So that's basically the move-in cost?
Correct.
You're ready to teach.
Right.
Okay.
Tom, does the contingency usually include the plan, reproductions? Is that usually, I've always thought that contingency fees were just cost overruns, potentially.
Right, right. Well, within that 1.2 million, we've lumped quite a few things in there. Part of it would be contingency, plan reproduction, I mean, that could run from 15,000 to 20,000. You'd like to get a lot of bids on your project, so the more you print, the better bids you get, testing, but we've just put it all in the same category right now, and I think as you move forward, you'd certainly delineate those numbers, and your contingency would certainly be reduced as you move through the process, too. Let me back up a second. This is Option C modified, which I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through the numbers, because most of them are the same. The only real difference is the total programmed area. For Option C modified, we've added in the early childhood education, which is about 33, 150 square feet, which would include a couple of early childhood classrooms, office, and a resource room. So the square footage goes up, and all the numbers kind of go up along with it. The Cooley Trail and Highway F site, it's a little bit bigger site, 39.5 acres, and there's a little portion that's contiguous to the city, which is this corner right here. So that would allow you to annex into the city if you went that route. What that does is allow the option to extend the existing city sanitary and stormwater down along Highway F, jump across Highway F and access the site. There is existing water right at that point right now, up at that corner.
Now, that would be if we annexed into the city Hudson, the city of Hudson. So that's something that Tom will talk more about, but there's a difference of whether we're in the city of Hudson or not in cost.
Right. Yeah, we'll see that in the cost estimate. One issue here, and in talking to the city, they had a couple of issues with annexation. One was the existing utilities being large enough to accept, you know, the addition of the school, which they don't think is a problem. Another issue is vehicular access to the site and safety. So within the cost estimates, we've identified some funds that would realign the intersection between Cooley Trail and Highway F, because it's kind of a acute, sharp corner, and I think there needs to be some sightline improvements at that intersection. So the proposed elementary school, and this was just laid out on the site, just to give you kind of an example of scale, again, it's that 83,840 square feet, would include the same amount of parking, bus drop-off, and what we're indicating is, you know, access off of Cooley Trail Road versus Highway F.
Tom, a question regarding the road realignment. Typically, is that, is that something that's a shared expense with the-
Yeah, and it's something that the county would typically do the project, and possibly assess back to the school district, you know, either in a lump sum or assess it over a number of years. So we've included the cost of that in there right now, so there may be some, you know, negotiations that would take place with the county in that regard. Looking at the estimated cost for this site, again, it's the same square footage as the previous one on the Crosby Road. This is the smaller version at 79,000 square feet, and what we've done was listed two columns. The one on the left would be if you annexed into the city, and then the one on the right would be private utilities onsite. Again, we've got parking and drives, grading here, it's a little more open site and a little bit flatter, so we've got a little bit smaller cost for that. We're carrying a cost of 225,000 for that road realignment. Playground equipment, again, at 150,000. Stormwater management, electrical service, and to connect to the city water and sewer, we're estimating that at $500,000 right now. There's the cost to actually bring it down there, then there's the sewer and water access charges, and then there's the connecting fees, so that's all included in that 500,000. If you look on the right, the private well and septic, we've lumped that together at just over a million dollars. So the option within the city is a little less expensive. Again, the Option C modified is a little more cost, just because the square footage is higher with the additions of the early childhood education rooms.
Is that square footage the same, Tom, 33,500?
Yes, in both of these scenarios. We also took a look at Holton and North Hudson, which we'll take a look at right now. Holton sits on about 15 acres right now along County Road E. There's 34,934, just under 35,000 gross square feet, and it serves two sections at this point. What we looked at was, you know, equipping it for 588 students, which is really doubling the amount of classrooms there, and we've done some rough diagrams here. This would be a classroom addition of 12 classrooms, and then along with that, there would be some expansion of the common areas. We've indicated a new IMC, new cafeteria, expansion of the existing kitchen.
One of the assumptions that we were working with, that if we were going to expand Holton and North Hudson, that we would make it comparable to the services that are provided at our other schools that are 588, so Hudson Prairie and Rock.
So really, we're doubling the size of this facility, adding 33,000 gross square feet. One of the challenges here is phasing the construction. We'd be looking at a couple phases versus one phase and new construction. Phase one, we've just identified as starting June of next year, getting the additions done in about a year, so it'd be June of '08. The challenge there is working around the existing facility and keep it operational. There would be some contractor staging area, storage areas, access, and it's a challenge, you know, to get the work done, and you pay a little bit of a premium for that during the construction. So we've identified some areas here that the contractors would have to really take over during the construction. The existing access to the site would be compromised, you'd have to reroute the buses and drop off the kids at a different location. And then the next challenge is that in phase two, you'd have to go back in the summer of '08 and complete that work in, you know, about three months to get it operational by fall of '08. It certainly can be done. There's been some other projects here in the Hudson District where they've done quite a bit in a short period of time, but it's a small window of opportunity, so.
Tom, with the, some of the existing space where you, I think you've indicated you remodel existing areas, would that be like expanding the cafeteria and some of those areas that, you know, with, you know, increased number of kids, you probably need to expand some of those other areas?
Correct. Go ahead, Mary.
Dan, it would be like the, in, at Holton, the media center is a small media center. Knowing that we would be doubling the size, we really need to make it a media center with the same capacity that Hudson Prairie has. So looking at that, we would, you know, that's interior inside the school. It's very difficult to really make that a good, workable size within the school, so we would change that space, and right now, the thought is we would redesign it, it would become a music and some other spaces, and then we would add on the, a new media center.
Right, and that includes expanding the entry, expanding the offices, you know, for the increased staff. So a lot of the common areas and core areas get expanded along with the classroom additions. Taking a look at the estimated cost for Holton, Option D, again, there's about 34,000 square feet of existing space there. We're proposing to add 33,000, you know, really doubling the size of the facility. You'll see we've got a little bit higher building cost per square foot, and as I said, you pay a little bit of a premium for contractors scheduling and staging around. Buildings are going to be occupied during the construction. It certainly impacts their cost on bid day. We've got common area remodeling at 423,000, and those are some areas that Mary was just referring to. We're expanding the kitchen, you know, to be able to accommodate the additional students, so we're putting in a line item for $50,000 of kitchen equipment. There are some options for the state code for building an addition this size, but one of them, and we think the most practical one, is adding a sprinkler system throughout the existing building, so we've estimated that cost at $200,000. There would be an upgrade in the electrical system, you know, new service to the building, upgrading a lot of the circuitry in different areas, adding a fire alarm system throughout the facility, so we've estimated that cost at 300,000. And then remodeling the HVAC system at another $600,000. And there's a couple of boilers in there, we'd have to add a additional boiler, and then go back and convert a lot of the existing steam equipment from the original building to hot water, so that's what that cost would be. So the subtotal of that is 1.5 million. We've got parking and drives, a little bit of cost in there for grading, some cost to modify the bus lane. As Mary said, we'd, you'd be looking at providing some equitable facilities where you'd have a separate parent drop-off and parking from the bus drop-off, so we've got some funds allocated for that. Playground equipment at 75,000. There's an existing well up there at Holton, and for the larger-sized school, that would have to be modified, basically abandoned and replaced, and then a new septic system to handle the expanded population. So this one with the same values that we apply to everything else for contingency permits, testing, FFNE, and the A&E fees, it's about 9.5 million.
Tom, I have a question regarding the square footage, and this one is considerably less than the others, and so talk a little bit about that. Why is that?
Sure. Well, I think it's just the existing facilities. The classrooms there are a little bit smaller than what the new program would include, you know, 840, 800 square feet versus 900. The gymnasium's smaller here. There's some existing facilities that, you know, we're not going in and replacing, but they're smaller, and it's just a smaller school. So it is quite a bit different. It's only 67,000 square feet versus, you know, about 83,000 for the other ones.
So then a question to follow up with that, then, for the staff is, would we be comfortable with, to be able to hold a capacity of that many kids with a smaller-sized gym, for example, or other smaller-sized areas?
Well, some of that space is in the classroom, so we have different-sized classrooms throughout the district. And when we build the new classrooms or design new classrooms, we're really using a standard of 900 square feet, which is a customary standard at the present date. So there's that space that's smaller, halls are smaller, those kind of things that we wouldn't be changing at all. The gym isn't, is an issue when you think of how many sections use the gym space for FIET. But that wasn't something, a gym's really hard to address, as far as additional space. Oftentimes, you can add another gym, but we feel we can work with the existing gym as long as we also have another space for the cafeteria that could, could function as FIET space as well.
Right. At both Holton and North Hudson, they, you know, use the gym for cafeteria and gymnasium, so we're separating that function at both of these facilities. But, yeah, there's, if you went down the line of the existing facilities, you could probably total up, you know, why it's less. North Hudson Elementary is on a little bit smaller site. It's 11, just over 11 acres, and it's a pretty good-sized building for that site. It's 56,925 square feet and serves three sections. It's fifty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-five square feet and serves three sections. As going through the program to add, you know, bring it up to five eighty-eight, we would add twenty-seven thousand seven sixty-four gross square feet. And again, this is just a representation for scale purposes. It could be configured a lot of different ways. But basically, we're adding on six classrooms, adding a new library, media center, and some special education. This twenty-seven thousand seven sixty-four, this is representative of the Scheme D modified, which has the early childhood education in it. Again, you'd be looking at a phased construction. Phase one, the new addition would be done starting next June and taking about a year to complete. Did you want to say something?
John.
Ah, well, you'd require the same typical contractor staging area, and that would really compromise the access to your existing facility. You'd have to reroute the bus traffic, you know, during the construction, and make sure you keep those two areas separate.
I just want to point out where the sidewalk is. That kind of, the, the circle drive goes right next to the front of the building along, alongside that. And so the new addition, we would probably have to block all of that off during the time of construction, because I believe it's ten feet away from the construction area that we have to secure just for safety issues. So no, there would be a significant impact during the construction phase with this building just because of the size of the addition, where it's located, and the size of the site as well.
And then the phase two, again, would be remodeling a lot of the area around the existing entry and offices. And it's not shaded on this plan, but in the scenario, we had remodeling the existing IMC back into the cafeteria. And I know it's kind of going to reverse in what was done about fifteen years ago, but that's just an option to build a new library and then remodel the existing library back into the cafeteria. The kitchen's there. We've included some funds in there to expand and remodel the kitchen to serve the larger student population.
When we talk about the office space, we're not just talking about administrative space. We're talking about the staff work area, the health room. Let's see, what am I forgetting? The guidance, a number of areas in, in that location. And when we talk about expanding that, one of the things that we've made a commitment to, if we're going to invest in these buildings and add on to them, that we create a secured environment. So that off, that traffic coming in during the school day would be able to go through the office, and the office could monitor any traffic coming into the building. So in the redesign and in the remodel, does give us an opportunity to have a secured entrance for two of these buildings, which is an advantage.
Taking a look at the cost for this project, again, the existing area is about fifty-six thousand square feet. We'd be adding, in this option, this is option D without the early childhood education, so the new addition is twenty-three thousand three seventy-six. Again, we're using that hundred and forty dollars a square foot cost. The common area remodeling is four hundred and twenty-five thousand. That includes the, the existing cafeteria, the kitchen, office area, some of the other common areas. We've included some new kitchen equipment cost in this scenario. Again, we're looking at adding a fire sprinkler system throughout the building, upgrade the electrical system, and remodeling of the HVAC system as well.
The HVAC system, Tom, aren't there three systems currently in this building based on additions that have occurred?
Right. Yeah, there's the original building, and then I think there was an addition in eighty-five and another one in mid-nineties. So each one kind of had a separate system. And one of the options here would be to tie it all together into a little bit more of a centralized thing. Parking and drives, we've got fifty thousand dollars, so it's a little bit less at this site, a little less grading at twenty-five thousand. We would modify the bus lanes at fifty thousand, and then we would add some playground equipment just to make it equitable. This is within the city, so we're not looking at those same type of onsite utility costs so they could connect to the existing utilities. With the contingencies, the FF and E and the A and E fees, it's just over six million, six million one hundred and fifty-nine thousand. And then the difference to option D, which was represented in that site plan, just has the additional space for the early childhood education.
Tom, can you talk just briefly the difference between point two seven versus point three one?
Yeah, and like I said, that number varies. What we did was totaled up all the net programmed area, and then we came up with the total footprint of fifty-six nine twenty-five, and that's the ratio that came out of it. So it's a fairly efficient building existing right now. So that number does vary a little bit.
In square footage on option B modified is very comparable to Crosby Site Modified and County Road F.
Correct.
Thule Trail.
Right. It's about seventy-seven, eighty-three thousand square feet. So it is pretty close.
Question regarding, came up last night at the intergovernmental meeting regarding capacities for, you know, water and sewer. So have we answered that?
Well, Tom and I both had information from Denny Darnold from the city this morning, and our capacity, which is about a hundred and fifty more students in North Hudson, equals about six houses. There is, in North Hudson, they have taken up most of their capacity, but we're still checking that out. It looks like it may be okay, but it is, is something that we still need to pursue a little further.
Again, this is just a representation of the two schedules, and we don't want to be too presumptuous, but here we are in August at this meeting. We've got the referendum indicated somewhere in the break in the calendar there, but I understand it's going to be sometime in December if you go that route.
We haven't made that decision. Could be in February.
All right. Well, then forget it. No, yeah. With that in mind, I just kind of laid out a proposed construction schedule, and this would be enough time to go through schematic design, design development, contract documents, so you could be prepared to issue construction bid documents at the end of March, receive bids at the end of April, and then get started in construction, you know, right after the school's out in June of oh seven. So the new building schedule, we figure at about twelve to thirteen months, which puts you at substantial completion in July of oh eight, and gives you some period of time to move into the facility and, you know, get ready and get started for the beginning of school and fall of oh eight. It's pretty much the same as the building addition, except that that phase two is really condensed into three months, or whenever you could make those areas available in that period. So it's a little more challenging schedule with the additions. And that's it.
Tom, would you call it a tight schedule based on construction?
Ah, yeah, I think so. It's certainly not, you know, it's doable. And contractors like to get in and out as quickly as possible, so they like a brief schedule.
Tom, what's your gut feel, I mean, looking at, you know, Holton and North Hudson? You know, what's your kind of qualitative statements about those facilities and expansion and things like that? What, you know, do you have, is it, is it a workable solution? Is it, you know?
Yeah, it's a workable solution. I think you've still got the existing facilities to deal with, which, as Tom indicated, are a little bit undersized for adding that kind of population to it. It certainly would serve the, the number of kids you're putting in there, but I'm not sure it would serve it as well as a new facility would. I mean.
Question. The, the North Hudson-Holton option.
Right.
Is not in any way upgrading the existing facilities, like the existing classrooms are going to be, remain just exactly the way they are. There's no renovation to those at all in the project.
There would be some improvements to the HVAC and electrical, but as far as the physical size of them, they wouldn't be changed. No.
I wanted to add some information since you're asking about site questions and so forth, so I'll pass this around. This came from the Facility's Task Force work, and ATS and R had looked at some guidelines from the Department of Public Instruction about the size of the site for construction, or for an elementary school. And so you're going to see information about what our size is for each of our locations, our schools, and then also what would be recommended based on the guidelines from the Department of Public Instruction. So as you look at this, EP, it, it has been a little revised from the Task Force work because they were working with the capacities that they had recommended at that time, which we have expanded for the elementary schools by two hundred and seventy seats. So just know that. So we've made some modifications to this original chart. And so if you take EP Rock, our existing site is a little over nineteen acres. And the guidelines is a basic acreage for an elementary school of fifteen acres, and then one acre for every one hundred students. So at EP Rocket would be fifteen plus the six because the capacity is five eighty-eight, equaling twenty-one acres would be the recommended guideline. So when you look at the schools that we're looking at possible additions to, if you would look at Holton, the next one, it's a fifteen-acre site, and as it is right now, if we would use these guidelines, it should be at eighteen acres. That's what the guidelines would say. If we would increase it to five eighty-eight, the guidelines would be exactly as you would see for EP Rock, twenty-one acres is what is suggested. And if you look at North Hudson, it is a little over eleven acres currently, and it's a recommended site for the school that's there now at nineteen. Now, there's some parkland and so forth that helps with that site. But it would be, again, going to a school of five eighty-eight, and the recommended guideline then is twenty-one acres for that site.
Board members, have any other questions for Tom or Mr. Holland?
Question regarding the guidelines is, is there, you know, what's the rationale for the guidelines? I mean, what, I mean, is it to preserve green space, add for expansion purposes in the future? Is there any?
I really can't speak to that other than just a professional opinion. The site needs to have opportunities for students both inside the school and that footprint of the school, for buses coming in, parent transportation, drop-off, that being separated, and then, and safe, and safety around the school, and then also for physical activity for students and various kinds of physical activity for students. So that's my guess. Nancy, I know you looked at this. Any other information that?
I just had one question for Tom. Tom, following the remodeling, just in rough terms, what percentage of our classrooms at Holton and North Hudson would still be undersized or below guidelines?
At Holton, half of them. I mean, I think all the existing classrooms are smaller than what we're programming for the new. And then at, it's probably, probably about sixty percent of them at North Hudson.
Okay.
You know? And I think when those were built, that was more the standard size.
Which was, what, seven hundred square feet? Is that, is that correct?
About eight hundred.
About eight hundred?
Yeah.
And nine, nine and change is the recommended?
Is the new one, right.
Okay. Thanks.
When those classrooms were built, and one of the reasons that classrooms are now bigger than they used to be, is what has changed, what goes on in those classrooms. It used to be that children would come in and sit in desks and stay in desks almost the entire time. They may gather together in a place, in the classroom, in a whole group. But now we, in elementary school, we have children in various places and locations. We have centers where children are spread out throughout the, the classroom. We have times when they're in desks or tables. We have times they're in multiple small groups. It's much more active. The learning is different. And when I think of our reading and writing and spelling program that we're implementing, this will reinforce the use of additional space in classrooms. Of course, we have many classrooms throughout the district that are under that nine hundred size, and we'll do everything we can to maximize that use. But building new, at this point, we would never go back and build them at that size based on education today and looking to the future.
The follow-up to that question I have has to do with, are, in some of the newer, you know, designs and buildings that you're doing for, you know, schools, elementary schools, are there some features that are, for example, are there some energy efficiencies that, you know, you're building into schools? You know, R-rating with windows, you know, that type of thing?
Sure. Well, I think the buzzword was high-performance school, you know, increased insulation, a lot of the facilities that are built now, they really try to create a little bit better insulating envelope and put a little less stress on your mechanical systems, a little more natural light. So there certainly are ways to save money in a better-performing school, and, you know, reduce your energy costs, so.
Tom, there used to be some grants available for those, that kind of design. Is that still the case?
Well, there's Focus on Energy in Wisconsin. It's not really grants, but they like to get involved early in the process, and they make some funds available to you for alternate methods of mechanical systems and things like that. And it's not rebates, but it's kind of planning dollars to help you take a look at some optional features that really enhance your building and its performance early on. The utilities used to offer rebates and, you know, energy savings, anything less than, or anything that you did above the minimum code, but a lot of them are discontinuing that. But Focus on Energy still got programs available for, you know, putting some planning dollars in place.
Is the upfront cost more expensive to do that, and then you recoup it in the operating cost?
Not necessarily. I mean, there's some fairly low-cost things you can do to the building that improve its, you know, performance, orientation on the site and natural lighting and things like that. Some of them are a lot higher-end cost, but you get a little bit more of a payback extension, so.
Could I jump back to the square footage on the classroom size? And I know you're familiar with Hudson Prairie. What is our average class size, the physical space for the classrooms at Hudson Prairie?
Well, the typical ones are nine hundred, and then the kindergartens are eleven hundred.
Okay. So that's kind of state-of-the-art, and that was?
Right.
I wouldn't say that's state-of-the-art. I would say that's, that's kind of the standard. State-of-the-art would be higher than that.
I, I will re-quote that.
So if I could just, kind of just summarize this here, so with the additions that we would do at North Hudson and Holton, even after we're done, we still have undersized sites, physical sites. At least fifty percent undersized classrooms by about twenty percent size-wise, and undersized common areas such as gymnasiums. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, I think that's true.
And I think we create disparity within the building because we have half of our, whatever we add on, will be significantly better equipped to handle today's kind of education than the classrooms that exist there now. In the kind of change, differences that you're talking about are, are equity issues in some ways.
Yeah, well, I absolutely agree, Cindy. And, and it'd be one thing, too, if we were looking at some economic savings, but I'm not, I'm not a math guy here, but just looking at the numbers, these costs are awfully, awfully close, and it just appears to me we get significantly less through the remodel than we do with new.
Big differences.
And, and of course, I'm not very happy with the And, and of course, I'm not very happy with the, you know, the geographic distribution of having more of our students way up north when the growth is all south. But I mean, I guess that's another issue, but...
That, that's a good question, Mark. And I'm wondering if, Mary, if you're able to touch on that, because to me, sort of a key component or piece to this is, you know, where is our, where is most of our growth occurring? It's, I've heard that, you know, a lot of it's coming from the south end of the school district, as well as the east side of the school district. Can, do you have something that bears that out?
Well, let me just first talk about what I'm sharing, and then I'll go to that, Dan. The lavender page that you're getting, so just to keep it as a summary, I thought it was helpful for me to look at it in relationship to the options, to see the, the total cost differences, and what you're, some of what you're getting for those costs. Obviously, we're not addressing things like inadequate space, but I want to make sure it's really not inadequate space. We're using it now, and we'll continue to use it, and our teachers are making the best use of it, and children are learning in that space. I just want to be really clear about that. So this is just a summary page, and I think the real important thing is, here's the cost, and here's the capacity, the additional capacity that you get for that cost. So, looking at it that way, at least it was helpful to me. I'll go on to your comment, Dan. And we did, thanks to Jen Nineman and Monica Bula, they have done some density studies of the district, some information about that. And hopefully, this will help you see where our students are located. Don't worry about the different colors. Some are a little pink, and some are blue. They are all students within the district. They mean something different that really isn't important in our discussion. The first page is the entire district, and you can see there are many students clustered that you can't even count, because they're clustered on top of each other. But you can see where the density is towards the center of the district, and locating 94, it's along the line of out of, out of district. You can see that we have clusters north of 94, and also south of 94. Now, if you turn to the additional pages, this gives you a little bit more specific information. So, turning to EP Rock, you can see that the attendance area is identified in the red, and then how the students are clustered in that attendance area. Obviously, it's a more dense cluster, close to 94, and as you get further away, it spreads out. I also have some information. Tom had asked for this information, so thanks for the question, so we could bring it to you. I asked Monica, how many of our students that we transport south of 94? And information I've received, and that's to our schools, is 316 students.
It's elementary?
Elementary students, yes. So we have 316 living south of 94 right now, which would be half of a new school. Looking at the next page, which is Hudson Prairie, and you can see, again, the attendance boundaries in the colored, and then the students and the density of the population of our elementary students, and this is elementary only on all of these. Turning to Willow River, and then I think, based on our discussion, the important ones to look at would be North Hudson and, and Holton, and comparing those two, looking at a new school in more the attendance area for Hudson Prairie and Rock, you know, and looking at that population. You can see the population, as we go more north, starts to spread out quite a bit. So that would, something that we certainly need to think about, as you're thinking about the attendance areas of two schools in the north part of our district, when our growth is in, our most growth is in the east and in the south, if we were adding those additions and remodeling, that would put those 441 seats north in the district, where our population is less dense, at the present time. So we would have some, certainly some additional transportation costs that you need to think about in our operating budget, on an ongoing basis, with those, moving those seats in the north end of the district. And that would be something that we would be paying for every year.
Mary, could you just quickly, on the violet or lavender piece of paper, could you briefly talk about the elementary capacity additions, the 588 versus 441?
Well, in the new school, and the location really makes no difference, as far as that capacity. It's really adding 588 seats in a location that is south in our district, where there is significant growth, or in a location that's east in the district. Then, moving on to the modified, which adds early childhood, I wanted to clarify that that just isn't another 588 school. It's 500, a school for 588 students and early childhood space. So that's addition to the 588. So that's very important that you understand that that has additional space beyond the 588. Looking at Holton and North Hudson, those have less seats in the district. Once again, they're north in the district. So, in either one of D or D-modified, we are adding 441 seats, which is less than, obviously, the new school seats. And then, in the modified version, we would be adding space for our early childhood students as well. When we look at the projections, and I think that's something that you should look at as well, when you're looking at seats, looking to the future, and one of the assumptions that I used when you, when I looked at long-term solutions, was seven years out, that that was a long-term solution to me. And when you go back to the information that's in your packet, um, try to find page number. Somebody gets there first, let us know. It's Agenda Item 4A, and it's Page 1. So if you would look at 2011, 2012, 2755, and looking at that in relationship to 07, 08, just, you know, there's at least 500, about 500 there, a little less than that. We go back to 06, 07, you know, you're getting into that 600 range, and the next year, you're continuing to add. If you'd look at the elementary numbers, continuing on from 2011, 2012, they don't stop increasing, they continue. And I think that's what we need to look at when we're looking at this additional space, and realizing that we don't peak and then stop at 441 additional seats. We certainly buy the projections, have a need for 588, and possibly more.
In terms of those 150 more seats, 588 versus 441, help me out in terms of, does that get us out another year or two with the projections?
I haven't done the calculations to just tell us that.
I'm just curious if...
Anybody?
Well, I just ran some quick numbers. I did just the opposite of what Dan's question was, and I added our current capacity of 2,352, plus 588 spots. I get 2,940 spaces. That gets us out to about 2013, 2014.
Okay.
Much better than my estimates.
Yeah, that, that's a new elementary 588 versus the additions of 441. And again, those are, you know, if you look at it, out to 2013, 2014, we're projecting 2,953 students. We're right at capacity again.
The other thing I would just point out is our current registered K-5 students right now. As of last Thursday, we had 2,374 students registered. So we were beyond the capacity at that point.
Any other questions from board members? I, I'm wondering if Ms. Sweet could just talk to us a little bit about the early childhood component, and, and why that's an important, you know, consideration for what we're looking at here.
Well, I think at the last board meeting, I spoke to the need to provide for a continuum of space for our preschool children with disabilities, some of which needs to be in a school setting. Certainly, we have other integrated environments in which to, you know, provide an appropriate education for those students, but they vary in need and characteristics, and some of those students need a school environment. In talking with Tom, you know, doing some of the preliminary planning for tonight's meeting, we looked at two classroom spaces, which would approximate the size of a kindergarten classroom, and we looked at a resource space associated with those two classrooms, which could provide space for the related therapies, vision impairment services, hearing impairment services, and, and perhaps could serve K through 5 students variously as well. The, that particular space could serve anywhere from 30 to perhaps up to 50 preschool children. And with the continuum of options that we would provide throughout the community, I believe it, it would serve our needs for that student population, you know, out the seven years or so that you're looking at. And I think you know, but perhaps the public isn't always aware, but it is, it is a law, you know, it is legally required that we identify students with disabilities beginning at age three. And they turn three all year long, and they're identified all year long. So, the numbers of students at the beginning of the year vary quite a bit from the number at the end of the year. But we're required to identify and serve them, and they present to us all variety of disabilities, 13 different areas of disability and levels of severity, and carry with it a considerable amount of inventory and equipment that you have to provide space for. You know, some of it's wheelchairs, you know, some of it's actually healthcare providers, provided not by the school, but by the public systems and parents that come with those students to school. So, the adults in the program take space, the children take space, and their equipment and educational materials take space. So, and there was a request, I think, from Board Member Holland last time, to look at whether we could provide for that need in, in additions, and you've seen the modified plans for all of the sites that you're considering.
Certainly, as we look at a growing population of kindergarten through fifth-grade students, we also have to look at additional students with disabilities, not increasing the percentage of our population, but definitely increasing the numbers of students that we need to serve. That also is the case for English as a second language students. So we look at these spaces as very important to our program, and part of our responsibility to those children.
Matt, I would just, just add, Mary, I think, you know, based on what Ms. Sweet has told us, it seems very compelling to me that we need to provide that space. And I would actually just argue that any option that, that doesn't include early childhood program space shouldn't even be considered.
I have, I have a question about that. What happens if we didn't, I mean, what'd be the options if we, you know, for some, for whatever reason, that space wasn't included? What would be your options in the district?
Well, when, when it became required that we provide a continuum of options, including school-based services, we, of course, began to look for existing spaces in the community that also served similar-age children, and in some cases, normally developing children. And that, the, the site for that would be the Y. Now, right now, we have maximum involvement in the Y. The Y has space limitations as well, and we've integrated as many students as they will allow us to integrate. Special Children's Center, we started a contract with them a couple of years ago for a section of early childhood, and began to place, most appropriately, those children that were more severely involved with their disabilities and needed the kind of therapeutic environment that they have already set up. And of course, we, we pay, you know, to use that space, and use their equipment, and we do have a service agreement to use their therapists. It, it's quite appropriate. This year, though, we, we needed to move out one of our sections of early childhood from Willow, in order to provide more kindergarten space, actually coming from Prairie. And so, Special Children's was kind enough to allow us to add another section. It, it's an adequate space, but it, it might not be entirely the placement for all of those students. You know, a school environment, or, you know, another environment with preschool children. We've looked at some of the daycare providers, and we've talked with them, and they're growing, and, you know, there are some possibilities. You know, I've, I've been involved with early childhood quite a long time, and even before I came to Hudson. And I do recall the time when early childhood students, their programs were offered in Knights of, not Knights of Columbus, but Legion Centers, you know, with fully-equipped bars and, and pool tables. I mean, just really inappropriate settings, truly. I mean, that's, that's where, that's where districts go, when they can't themselves provide space in their schools. They, they look for these other places. And they're often not exclusive spaces, you know, sometimes churches. I'm aware of, of early childhood programs in the past, at least, who've been in churches. It's ne, it's almost never exclusive space, so you're always taking up and setting, you know, setting up and taking down. And then, of course, the Sunday School children move in. So it's really, sometimes, very inappropriate community environments, and, and then sometimes, very, very challenging to implement around everything else that's going on in that same site. But those would be the options. I would, you know, go around and look and see what we could find.
Nancy?
But I would, I would, I've always wanted, I just have to put this in, but, you know, we provide wonderful, wonderful programs to all of our students, disabilities, not disabilities gifted, you know. And I, I think it wouldn't, wouldn't be in keeping, I guess, with our particular value system here, if we didn't provide something equitable for our early childhood students, so.
I didn't hear the beginning of your comments, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And did you talk about the efficiencies of having early childhood in one location, as far as some... as far as some transportation and itinerant services?
Oh, I talked about that, I think, a little bit last time, but we, you know, we've gone through this transition as our district has grown of having early childhood classroom at Willow, a couple at Prairie, and then we kind of spread out into the community. But what happens with that is that you, we have multiple occupational and physical therapists, and our hearing impairment teacher, and our vision impairment teacher, that's time without kids as they move between buildings. It's really very inefficient, lost, unproductive time, and they carry equipment in their cars and all of that. So we've always been hoping that when we have this opportunity to redesign, that we designed a center or space, at least, where we could locate all of these services, and it truly would save money. It would save money in terms of staffing, because we staff additionally for their time on the road. We build that in.
I would encourage you to refer to page five that talks about the modified with the early childhood, and give some of the advantages, certainly that Nancy's talked about, in relationship to providing early childhood space ourselves within our buildings.
And I guess I just wanted to say that I agree with Mark, that we should be focusing on options that include space for learning for all our kids, not just a portion of them.
Brian, did you have any other questions relating to that? Okay. Well, unless there's other questions from board members? Brian?
Maybe I'm staying the obvious here, but if I do the build option, I mean, the refurb option of Holton, North Hudson, it's more expensive than the other options, and it's less capacity. And am I missing something there? I mean, is that?
No, that's what I saw.
So what's the, you know, so what's the advantage of building onto the two schools? You mentioned security, potentially redoing the security for both schools. Anything else that the administration sees as advantages of the refurb option besides security?
Mary, could I, I'll just say one thing.
Well, she's looking at her notes, let me just make a quick comment on that. At some point in time, I believe the options of remodeling are going to have to be done.
Cam?
And Dick, that's exactly what I was going to say.
It's just a matter of timing, a matter of when.
And certainly, those options aren't, they don't become closed to us in the future if we don't choose them now, the building on options. The land isn't going away, and the, you know, the space to build additional classrooms and expand that space, if it's necessary, doesn't go away from us, right?
What you're saying, excuse me, Dick, is that after, what, 2013, 2014, we may have to be doing those remodels.
Well, having lived in Hudson for over 30 years, everybody talks about the Stillwater Bridge.
That's still low.
When and if that bridge is built, there's no doubt in my mind that that's going to have an increase in growth of the district, and Holton would certainly appear to be well poised to, based on the numbers we have and the capacity, et cetera, at some point in time, to absorb some of that growth with remodeling and expansion.
There's no doubt about that, although current growth, I think, most of us probably would concede is, as Mary, I guess, pointed out earlier, east and south of the district. I happen to live south of 94, so it's always readily apparent to me every day, driving around, construction activity out there. So I think that should be considered, I guess.
I think when you look at the advantages and disadvantages of each of the options, and look towards the future, right now, we see additional students, a significant amount of additional students. 588 seems, you know, right down the road from us. It's not that far away to fill up that school. When we take those additions, one thing I heard in the public was to, what we talked about last night when Tom and I were at a meeting, was essentially chunking it and breaking up our new construction, new additions into pieces to help our owners afford that. And if you would build a new school now, or recommend to our public that we do that, you have the option of these additions at any time and chunking them. You don't have to do both of them at the same time. You can continue, you have time to watch how our district continues to grow, what happens to our enrollments, and then you can take one of those pieces and add on to Holton if the bridge goes in and creates more enrollment, and then if we need more at North Hudson, or vice versa, whichever it would be. But I think it allows opportunities for the district to look towards the future and have options available. If you would choose, for no other reason, not because of cost, but if you chose the remodeling addition option, we'd have those 441 spaces, but we soon would be looking at a decision, now do we build a full elementary school? Because there really aren't a lot of other options unless we choose to make our schools much bigger than 600.
Well, I think as one board member, what's compelling to me is, you know, one, the costs are fairly comparable, so then I turn to, you know, the capacity, and looking at 588 versus 441, that's compelling to me. Then I turn to, you know, where's most of the growth occurring in the school district? You know, south and east. So I guess, you know, what seems to be, you know, fairly clear in my mind is that it just seems like, you know, if we, for basically the same dollars, if we can get more space for growth, and, I don't know, I'm just doing some rough calculations here, it looks like, you know, it could get us three more school years with that 588, you know, and looking long-term in what we can do for the taxpayers, and if we can, you know, you know, push out, having to address dealing with growth later than sooner, you know, it seems to make sense.
One other point, Tom. What's happening to construction costs from year to year? What's the history of that?
Well, in 2002, we look back at, we had some estimated costs for, elementary was $113 a square foot, and, you know, we look at 5% a year inflationary costs, and it's been a little more extensive lately. Different areas have been more expensive, so they just keep rising. I mean, I think that's a sure bet.
Do board members need any additional information before we do as the Facilities Committee recommended in advancing a couple of these options forward? Do you feel like you're equipped with enough information?
I do.
Brian?
Just, I have one question, which may not be, you know, we don't need to necessarily flesh out tonight, but just in the council you've been on, Tom, the Intergovernmental Council, or Dick, what you've been doing, this annexation piece with, down on F, is, you know, what's the conversation around that? Is that in the realm of possibilities? Is that something that's?
Well, we have had conversation with the city about that, and of course, the Planning Commission and the City Council would have to vote for that to occur. We'd have to come to agreement. There's an agreement that we reach in relationship to that. Right now, with initial conversation, and I can only talk about initial conversation at this point, we have not completed an application nor submitted one, seems like there is a good support for us to move forward with annexation. I've also had conversation with a couple representatives from the town of Troy, and they really didn't feel like they lost anything if we annexed to the city, as long as we used that property for a school. If we annexed and then sold that property to a private, whatever it was, then they would lose property taxes, and that would be something that they certainly would not want. But there is no disadvantage for them to have a school there. In fact, I think there really is an advantage because their community is adjacent to the school site, and at some point in the future, we would think that there would be homes that would surround the school on the town of Troy, in the town of Troy, and that would be very advantageous. When we talk, go ahead, Tom.
I think we got a stronger sense from Troy than I think maybe from Hudson. I don't know that we, I felt like, anyway, Troy had more of a, more comment about it regarding what you'd stated, and that's changed, kind of the feeling has changed over the last number of years because of the growth in Troy, in the residence, in the residential areas in those, in that particular area. So the feeling, at least from those representatives, were that it would be probably seen as an advantage by Troy. Hudson, I didn't get any read from at all, one way or the other.
Was that the city of Hudson?
Yeah.
Not at that meeting, and we've had additional meetings that I'm really relating to. I think one comment that I thought was very positive from representatives from Troy was, it would be nice to have a school that was located in their area, whether it was in the city or whether it was in Troy itself, for their community, to serve their community. So they looked at that as positive.
Brian, one comment on the Crosby site, on W. If that were to be one of the options we move forward with, obviously, the city water and sewer would not be available to that site, whereas with an annexation petition for the County Road F and Cooley Trail site, you know, there's some strong arguments, I think, for annexation, one of which is utilities are relatively close, and we are contiguous to the current city property or its boundaries, so we would not be created an island. So I, you know, I certainly wouldn't even want to say what the City Council or Planning Commission for the city of Hudson could do, but it seems that we have some good arguments that we can line up as part of the petition.
You know, I would really be surprised if the city would refuse our request to be annexed. They've already, I mean, they've almost indicated their willingness to annex land along stage line for commercial development, and, I mean, I think, I think they would probably even feel the political pressure if the school district, well, we'd save half a million dollars, so here's the school district asking to be annexed at considerable savings to our taxpayers. I would really be, I don't know what, on what basis the city would refuse this. As long, I mean, we have to, assuming there's capacity, and I understand that there is. They're building a new well out in that part of the south of the.
I don't think water is the question. I think the key question really would be more on the sanitary and the capacity. And then I think, Mr. Tuig, earlier this evening alluded to the traffic, that, you know, there may be some questions on access and ingress egress out of the site.
Any other questions? If I'm reading board members correctly, it would be my sense that there's interest in advancing the early childhood component forward, and I'm also sensing that there's interest in the new elementary school, which would lead us into the C, the two C-modified, one Crosby and the other at Cooley Trail, to move forward. Is that, am I reading the board correctly?
That'd be my feeling, Dan.
Okay.
That's me.
If I'm correct there, then do board members have some questions in terms of, you know, information that we want to ask Mary to investigate further? Certainly, the annexation issue is one.
We plan to bring information to you September 11th, information about how, the two options that you select, whichever ones you select, how they would impact the taxpayers, our owners. So that's something we're already preparing to do. We think that's very important in your decision-making, and if there's something else, other additional information that would be helpful to you, we will continue to talk to Troy and to the city of Hudson, and also the town of Hudson, if these are the two options. But once again, we will not be moving things forward until you're making decisions about annexation, and that's a whole process. So right now, we don't anticipate problems, but it is a process that we have to move forward, and there are a number of other people involved in that process. We would hope that all of the municipalities would feel the partnership that we share in serving the residents and the owners of our school district and the taxpayers in this community. So we are and have been working together, and I'm very hopeful that we will be continuing that in the future.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Munich, for your work in the committee, and Mr. Tuig, for your presentation. Unless there's any other questions, we'll move on through the agenda. First, I'd like to note that we've come to the end of the work session. Oops. Communicate, I'm sorry, excuse me. One other item here, communication plan for elementary space for learning options. Cindy?
Oh, okay. Regardless of which of the two choices we move forward today, that is, assuming that we make a decision about that, we think it's very important, the communications committee is met, and we think it's really important that we begin to get out into the community and talking with them, hearing from them about the options that we'll be bringing forward. And so the administration has set up five, or, I'm sorry, six meetings. These will be public, they'll be posted, and there'll be, a postcard is going out announcing these meetings in the community. One at the city of Hudson, one in St. Croix County Government Center, St. Joseph Town Hall, the city of Hudson Municipal Building in Troy, and like so, at the government buildings. What we'd like to do is have, Mary is going to go to all of these sessions that are currently set up. What we'd like to have is two board members that attend with Mary to these sessions to hear the community and to talk with them about whichever options we put forward. The communications committee, along with the administration and with the facilities group, there's a PowerPoint that can be shared at those meetings, and that will be all put up on the web so that people can look at it there or go and retrieve it there for themselves, but to have a sort of foundation for, you know, beginning to share some of the information about our decision-making and some of the issues related to that. So I do have a clipboard here, I'd really love it if every board member would try to attend at least one of these. That would be really useful. I think it'd be really good for all of us to get out and meet with people about that. We're also in the process of setting up meetings that will be probably more during the daytime, early mornings and noon times, and with community groups like, you know, the, I don't know, J.C.'s, Lyons, Rotary, these kinds of groups that exist in the community during their regular meeting times. And what we would like to do as we're able to connect with those groups, we'd like to be able to have you sign up for some additional presentation, question-answer, and that kind of thing with those groups too, so that we can really do the best job we can of getting information out into the community and hearing back from them. Is there anything else, Dick? Did I miss anything from communications? We are going to put these up on the web, we'll put the PowerPoint up on the web there, and we'll get the postcard out. We have a new contract for communication services. She's doing a, you know, hitting-the-ground-running kind of job, and there's a lot to do, so we'll get those things up as soon as we can. And in the meantime, I thought maybe I would just start passing this around, and if there's a time, you could sign up, and if not... a time, you could sign up, and if not, then probably get ahold of the district office if there's something that you have to check a calendar with.
Sam, one comment in the spirit of over-communicating, I mean, how about other places where people gather, like the parent organizations, you know, at all the schools, and maybe try to get a forum at Trinity and St. Pat's as well?
Absolutely. That's another thing I wanted to ask about, was if the board has places they would like us to set up the same kind of meetings with?
Just a thought, you know.
Parent groups, Trinity and St. Pat's. Anything else? Any other places we should?
I'd suggest the ministerium, Tom.
Ministerium? Okay. Anyone else? Christian Community Home? Okay. Anyone else?
Were you planning a couple at the library?
Library?
The library is represented by the municipal building. As I understand, the library really doesn't have a space that we can use, so we have two sessions scheduled for you right now at the municipal building, and that really covers the library, too.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. She'll be passing that clipboard around for board members to sign up. Okay, that ends our work sessions, so we'll move out of the work session, return to our regular agenda. Topics for action, elementary space for learning options. Mr. Minnick, do you have some more to?
I really don't, other than I, the only thing I would just reinforce what the Facilities and Grounds Committee did Monday morning, which is rather than forwarding specific recommendations as far as options, what the committee did was, by consensus, recommend to the full board that at this meeting tonight, that we reduce down to two options for further study.
Thank you. That said, do we have, would we like, I'm willing to entertain a motion for advancing two options? Ms. Crimmins?
I would make a motion that we advance Option C modified to include the early childhood space and that we advance that option for further study at both of the site locations, at the Cooley Road site as well as the other site.
Okay, members understand the motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Kaiser-Schott. Discussion. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to citizens' requests to speak to the board. Do we have any requests?
Dan, one thing I did have is, I see Steve is still here. I think, and I don't know if Steve was intending to speak as a member of the public this evening, but I think we should give him the opportunity to hand out his revised copy that he mentioned or alluded to earlier in the evening.
I'm sorry, Steve, did you?
And I just, I didn't want him, did you have copies, Steve, too?
I don't have enough for everybody, so I'll get that to the board.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. If there's no request to speak to the board, then I guess we're going to move on to a journey to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Turn 1C, in order to consider employment data on District Employee in F, in order to consider the medical and personal history of an employer, which, if discussed in public, would have an adverse effect upon the reputation of the employee and then others.
I move that we move to closed session.
Okay. This is, we have a motion by Ms. Crimmins. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Havish-Aleene. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, we should have a roll call vote.
Minnick, aye.
Chernohoy, aye.
Crimmins, aye. Havish-Aleene, aye.
Kaiser-Schott, aye.
Holland, aye.